Please rise as we call on Pastor Doug Dent of the Federated Church for this evening's invocation.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Above all, give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders that your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, great God, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask all this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. And together we say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this November 3, 2014, City Council Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Him.
We have a quorum. There are no public hearings this evening, no bids to award. Under petitions and communications, we will have a council discussion and possible action regarding historic properties, regional treatment center proposal. And I'll call on Kent Matson for an update.
I'm going to join Kent down there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. Anthony Hicks and I decided to make the presentation jointly from the podium because over the last week that we received some additional information from the developer, he and I have been working together with Mark and some other people to go through the information that was supplied to be able to make a presentation to the council this evening.
Very good, thank you. Can we facilitate the sound of?
Okay, is that better, Terry?
I'll do my best to speak up. Just to maybe tee this up for the council members, the assessment regarding the developer's project has been guided by the request for proposal document that was originated back in 2011 and 2012. And before that was the guiding document that was intended to provide the council with a process to seek information out and disclosures from people interested in redeveloping various portions of the campus. This is what was guided through the Schlossman process and through the residences most recently. The purpose of the documentation and the information disclosure was to lead the council through the assessment and the evaluation and selection process criteria that are in Section 16 of the RFP. And that's the document that basically allowed you to take the information from the developer and measure those four areas of development criteria: the proposed plan, the capability of implementing the development plan, financial considerations, and the viability of the project overall. So the RFP document is intended to work as a whole to collect the information and allow it you to present it and compare it against the evaluation criteria. That's why it's important to get the type of information that we've been seeking. The developer and the city have been working over the past months to try to get the type of information that was requested in the RFP to guide the council in making the decision on the next step. And again, to place the council in a position of making informed decision on how to move forward with Mr. Willie's project. So that's the spirit within which Mr. Hicks and I reviewed the information packet and the impetus behind the recommendation and the results that we have this evening. So the question of whether or not the information submitted in response to the request for proposal document met the requirements of the production, what Mr. Hicks and I have concluded is that it doesn't meet all the requirements of the RFP. We say that by taking the developer's information, measuring it against the 11 or 12 elements of requested disclosure, focusing on those areas that the council felt it important to derive information from the developer, and again, to put you in a position of making an informed decision about whether or not to award the project. We appreciate Mr. Willie's recent disclosure. It is quite a bit more information than we received in the past, but if you measure it against what is asked for, it doesn't get all the way there. So that is the conclusion that I reached in talking to some of the council members. My understanding is that's the conclusion that some of you reached. And just speaking to that point, Mr. Hicks will make some comments as well. But what I want to encourage the council is to say, you know, there's more to the simple question about did the RFP get responded to completely. Regardless of whether or not it did, we have some recommendations about the next step to continue to work with the developer.
Thanks, Kent.
Should Ray be listening to this?
Is he on the phone, Mark? I guess I would ask that we contact him. Okay.
Is that the desire to have him on the phone?
Sure.
I don't see what the point is. I mean, we listened to him once. If we have to talk to him later, that's something, but I don't know why we're... What's... He's fulfilled everything he's asked for, right? Right, Kent, is that true? I mean, as much as he possibly could. Do we need to move on with him on the phone? Is that something that's going to help Anthony?
I mean, I think only out of courtesy. I mean, at this juncture of time, if we have a number, we could try calling him.
I guess you've communicated with more than I have, or we have, I should say. So if you guys think it's right, that's what I guess you should make the decision, not us.
Yeah. I think if Ray is available, then we can hook him in so he has first hand and not second hand.
Okay.
I'll wait a few moments.
Mayor, just one question. Have you kind of responded with him at all since your review process?
Only on clarification on a few points.
Okay, you have done some.
But not in terms of any conclusion.
Sure.
Can we just call this cell? Do we have anybody that can sing? And then somebody maybe that can dance? So we can have some entertainment? Somebody that's good at telling jokes? No, I'm not. Break the ice and pass the time?
Mr. Willie had sent an email earlier today requesting a telephone connection with him, and Mark had responded that there would be one, and I think we need to have that available. Thank you.
Do we have a... Can we get an outside line?
Yeah.
Put it in the message for the call-in, right?
Yeah, we did it before. You have to call the number. Hello, Ray?
Yes.
Yep, you're on. We've just started the presentation, so if you would like to listen in.
Yes, thank you.
Obviously, Kent has already spoken, Ray, and I'm probably going to pretty much cover some of the basic and similar information that Kent has already done, but I'd just like to kind of, you know, cover a couple of opening comments and to sort of say that this is a complicated transaction and obviously it involves multiple interests. And there's also a lot of emotional attachment to this property and, you know, what decisions get made. But it would be also fair to say that it's not a normal property. And in my review, I've tried to open, be open and objective about, you know, the presentation of the documents. And it would be fair to say that if I was a banker looking to finance this particular project based upon the responses to the RFP, that it would be very difficult to make that decision to go ahead. But I'm not a banker, and I'm not here as a banker. You know, this is, as I said earlier, a complicated transaction, and it's a difficult property. And at the end of the day, there are only a limited number of developers that are capable and able to take on board this project. But I see my duty, you know, to ensure that we don't put the residents of the city at any risk, and also to see and find a way that we can renovate the property and ultimately to minimize risk for all parties. I think it would be fair to initially just say, you know, what is the principle of an RFP? And there's, you know, there's a couple of things in there, you know, that, you know, obviously, RFPs are used particularly when you can get multiple parties interested in quoting on something, and it ensures that suppliers respond factually to the identified requirements. And it's generally expected to follow a structure and so that you can do an evaluation and selection. And it's particularly important for, you know, public sector of government that we have that. And we do RFPs in pretty much many of the things that we do, you know, for the city. You know, historic properties have provided a considerable amount of information. I would say the flow and the format and the content have been sporadic. You know, they are limited to a project of this scope and scale, and sometimes they're minimalistic in content. What's made the review a little more challenging is that we've received data over the course of time and not necessarily in a reference form. That being said, historic property have provided a lot of material, and we have tried to match the relevant pieces to corresponding RFP requirements. And I did that on my table downstairs by putting the piles out there and breaking out the documents. Within the RFP, there were basically 11 criteria. The first one was a transmittal letter. And I think, as I said, one of the things that's made somewhat the review difficult is that some of the documents have merged into more than one segment. And, you know, the transmittal letter was broken down into nine subparts. We did receive obviously an initial letter back in June of 2013. We obviously signed a letter of intent in July of that year, and we got a major project update in September. But we are still missing some of the detailed company information, you know, even simple things like tax identification number, partner listings, et cetera. But, you know, to go forward, we'll need, you know, some of that additional information. The executive summary covered four basic questions about the developer, its team and their roles. Generally, this has been covered in documentation handed to the city council members, but it tends to be very generalized. The development team, you know, it calls for requests to identify firms that make up the team, together with any legal issues that they've faced in the past and currently involved in. It covers things like architects, consultants, et cetera. And that's kind of one of those documents that are, one of those questions that's been merged in points two and three within the executive summary in the development. But there's limited material about, you know, potential consultants, builders, contractors to be used in the project. The other one that's really mentioned is the architect. The relative experience, there was eight points to that question. In general, asking to identify specifics to these projects included the teams involved, descriptions, costs, photographs, et cetera. One of the good things that was provided were references from the city of Newcastle. I did speak to all three of those: the mayor, their economic development, and their council. All spoke highly of historic properties and its representatives. They stated that they did hire professional consultants and that the financing took a little longer than was originally projected and planned, but mainly that was due to government bureaucracy, not necessarily the fault of historic properties. The city did spend approximately $1 million of improvements in the envelope of the structure prior to historic properties purchasing the property. And we have received a tremendous amount of newspaper articles and clippings about the varied projects, but miss some of the detail as to what the actual projects were and whether they came in, budget, et cetera. The development concept, and again, that's seven subsets, you know, covering the conceptual design, looking for a narrative to describe the activities and the implications. And we've received that, but in a very broad stroke approach to the basic concepts. And again, it lacks some detail. Point six was about the National Register of Historic Properties. And we have received a letter from the Minnesota Historical Society dated August of this year expressing their support and guidance for allowing the demolition of Building Number Two, which would commonly be known as the administrative wing. John Anderson was here at a council meeting early September, and, you know, he verbalized knowledge of the concepts of varied tax credits to the council. And subsequently, we have received a PowerPoint presentation of that, of what he spoke about that night. Market feasibility, it calls for an assessment to be done on the project, and we've had a limited response to that with no party, no third party being engaged. Historic properties relying on their own determination of need. A hotel study was completed in June of this year, and to date, the publisher, the findings of that have not been published. But needless to say, obviously, the hotel portion has been pushed back to a second Point eight is a description of public benefit. Asked for a statement and description of the overall benefits: jobs, housing, future tax base, urban quality, design, public, blah, blah, blah. You know, the documentation that we've been provided for this basically is newspaper cuttings, which were advertisements placed in the Daily Journal in midweek in October of this year highlighting some of those points. I think, you know, ultimately, we would like to see a little bit more detail on that as we go forward. Project schedule, timeline, you know, about obtaining the financial construction, start leasing, sellout. We got some basic information on the outline of that, essentially covering a 24-month period. I understand obviously the precise dates are difficult at this point in time until the deal is done. But I think, you know, when we, you know, going forward, we need to better understand the project breakout as to, you know, when certain parts of any project are going to be completed and have that tie up to, you know, the relevant financing package. The proposed projected financial information, this is obviously, this is probably the larger section, and there's a number of subsets, you know, asking for details on the financing of the project, including the breakout of the major components, projected cash flows, and estimated values upon completion. The developer portion, again, I would say it's a very broad-based approach. The RFP does call for cost breakouts, cash flows, operating performance, summaries, job creation, including, you know, wages and numbers of people. Obviously, we've received quite a bit of information about the varied tax credits that historic properties are looking to obtain, including the HUD loan and the EB5 investment. And obviously, there's a portion of GAAP finance that's been identified. At the moment, we do have a letter of support on the EB5 for approximately $6 million. Obviously, there is a public assistance request. You know, the state grant funds can be used towards infrastructure improvements, but it should also be reminded at this point that there are indeed two projects at the Kirkbright site that belong to Mr. Schlossman, and some of those funds are obviously allocated to that. And obviously, anything that happens up there with those funds would benefit obviously both projects. You know, there's been a lot of talk about equity. And just to clarify, on a company balance sheet, the amount of funds contributed by the owner, you know, plus retained earnings is equity. And I would say that at this point in time, the EB5 funding of $6 million would be what I would class as equity, because it would be no recourse money other than to the project. If you borrow money, it's technically not equity. It's risk to the developer if you borrow money, but it's not equity in the company. And obviously, then the last portion was, you know, regarding the developer's personal financial information, and obviously Kent has reviewed that. In conclusion, I would say, you know, based upon the actual content and the responses to the RFP, it would be difficult to say it's a comprehensive and complete document that could be used to support loan applications. But I would once again remind people that we're not bankers, nor are we developers, and we are only here really to decide on what we're going to do next. And I'll let Kent speak, and then I'll come back to my recommendations of where we go forward.
Did you have any questions in response to what Anthony presented?
No, but I missed your opening comment, so I'm coming in a little blind on that.
Ray, in a nutshell, I had just given a little bit of a background of what the RFP was intended to accomplish, and then just identified the evaluation criteria that are in Section 16 of the RFP document. And again, the information disclosure was intended to arm the council with the information so they could apply the evaluation criteria, which is why we asked for the information. And then I just indicated that in my review of the materials that were provided, while it was more information than provided in the past, if you considered it line by line of what the request for information was, it didn't meet all of the areas that were requested. And then Anthony went into, essentially reached the same conclusion, but just teased out some of the detail of why he concluded that. So one of the charges from the council was to evaluate whether or not the information that was provided was thorough, complete, or met the requirements of the RFP. I think our conclusion is that it did not. It's generalized information without some of the specifics. In particular, the restaurant project detail is lacking. There is no market feasibility to say whether or not there is a demand in the community for four or more restaurants, for instance. So whether or not the project is viable, that is, can the idea be capitalized upon, we don't have a third-party assessment to say whether or not that's feasible, just by way of example. So I guess if the core question was, was the information sufficient to meet the requirements of the RFP, Anthony's in my conclusion was it was not. Still doesn't answer the question of what to do next, but we have some ideas on that. But I guess we would stop there to see if there's more that you want or other direction.
I would mention one thing. I specifically focused on the items that you highlighted. After the meeting of October 6, on your email to me on October 8, you sent the RFP with the highlighted items to answer. Those are the ones I focused on. Are you saying even those were not sufficient?
Yeah, Ray, I think what, in fairness, that we've tried to build a record on is we've tried to communicate to you the type of information we wanted. That October 8 letter from me highlighting some of the areas, trying to make it crystal clear, was just trying to, again, focus on what we needed, not by way of limitation, but trying to indicate what we were looking for. So we were trying to get the information that was sought, again, to arm the council with the information to get their questions answered. So that was kind of the focus on it. Does the council, anything more for Anthony and I at this stage?
Counselors, Ben?
I'm just anxious to hear Anthony's. You have a recommendation, correct, based on?
Yep.
Anyone else? Proceed.
Go ahead. I got to go first this time. I think, you know, my recommendation to the council would be, you know, that the city engages with historic Kirkbright in finalizing a developer purchase agreement with some of the following conditions or criteria to be, you know, involved in it. The first part would be that the city is not able to meet the request of historic properties to provide $700,000 at closing, but, you know, should look at how we could do that in some stages or look at using, you know, remaining fund balances towards particularly the designated nonprofit portion of the project. And as I sort of mentioned obviously last week, I think, you know, there's more than one way to skin a cat, and that's kind of, you know, we have to look at what we can provide in goods and services in kind, you know, as well as dollars to help that. But I think it would be very difficult to get agreement to give $700,000 at signing, and I don't think that would be a fiduciary duty of any council member or the city. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it down the road, you know, in terms of portions, whether it's staged or et cetera. I think also that, you know, we have to look to the friends of the Kirkbright in assisting and supporting some cash towards this project. You know, obviously, historic properties have identified a GAAP funding shortage. You know, they, I spoke to some of the members of that, and they have pledges that are coming in to assist and help with that, up to the tune of so far about, you know, $300,000 to $500,000. So I think it would be good, you know, for that money to be also engaged. And I would also say that the city should not underwrite that funding. It would be purely a donation by the friends of the Kirkbright donors. I think the other thing that we need to do is to research a performance bond on the development project. You know, today, obviously, we have approximately $4 million of state funding that would be expanded into infrastructure, into the Kirkbright project. That would obviously be to sewers, water, roads. Obviously, once that money is expanded, then there would be no more state funding. Should anything obviously happen untoward, then obviously the city would be left with no dollars left to do any repairs or demolition of the building. And not that we want to be there, but we also have to mitigate risks. And to that end, I would also suggest that the city engineer be engaged in... And to that end, I would also suggest that the city engineer be engaged in getting updated not only demolition costs, but environmental costs and stabilization costs for the building in order that we could have an amount that we could bond to protect the city down the road. And I think that, you know, potentially, we'd have to check, obviously, with the language in the state grant money, whether that can come out, the $4 million, or whether it would have to come out, that $700,000 money. I would also then suggest that a small group be engaged in negotiation with Mr. Wiley and his team, and that we do our best to accommodate a place where that could happen. I would suggest that, you know, we meet in somewhere like Minneapolis, and people could fly in there. We have a room for a day, and we hash out a deal and get it done. And I would suggest that a couple of council members, I would obviously be willing to participate in that. And if I had to nominate somebody, I would actually nominate Councilmember Psychos to do that. I think he has a good head on him, and would be a fair representation, from our point of view, together, obviously, with the city administrator and legal counsel. And I would also then say that we have to look to a mutual agreeable date with Mr. Wiley and his team to make that happen. And that's where I think we have to be flexible as to where that meeting takes place to accommodate everybody's schedule. And I'd also suggest that that gets accomplished before December 31, so that everybody gets this thing put to bed. Because we do have Thanksgiving, and we do have Christmas, and we do have New Year. And Mr. Mattson and myself have been involved in a number of negotiations that happen always around this time of year, and it gets extremely challenging to get people together. So I think, you know, I would like to push for it to get done before the end of this fiscal year. Mr. Mattson?
Yeah, I think what Anthony and I challenge ourselves to do is to say, you know, what can we do with the information that was presented? And I think what we've got is a developer who has showed a commitment to making something happen, somebody who is outside the community but has expressed an interest in helping raise this project up. And if you take that, together with the information that he's provided, that does give a little bit more color to what his proposal is, we've got, you know, an expression of an intent, we've got an idea with some of the information supporting it, and is that enough to engage and continue the process of trying to enter into a development agreement, which will address things like a performance bond to protect the citizens in the event that the project doesn't happen? Because Ray has been transparent that, you know, nothing's a guarantee, and nothing is assured. What you are assured of at this point in time is that there is a sunset on the state grant funds that have always been intended to protect the citizens from having to deal with the facility. And when you took title to it, that was the commitment and the promise to the taxpayers. We find ourselves two years away from that deadline sunsetting with not enough time to really spare. We can go back to the legislature and try to ask for more time, but that's not, you know, a ready-done certain deal. So between now and the end of the year, can we come up with a development agreement and some more information from the developer that would put you in a position of being able to commit public property and public funds in support of a development? We believe that there is time to do that. Does the community and do the friends of the Kirkbright need to step up to the plate with some fundraising activities to make sure that their project happened, that they hold near and dear? Absolutely. But again, it's a community project, and it's going to take that type of effort. And again, based upon the information that we've seen, this isn't something that we would recommend saying to Mr. Wiley, "Thank you for interest, but we can't accommodate a project." I think you authorize a smaller working group to negotiate, try to hammer something out to bring back to you to something that does have more definition, that does have more disclosure, and would allow you to commit some public funds and public property to a private development. It does have to address the $700,000 request. Neither Anthony or I could support that type of payment upfront without some conditions, without some milestones, without some deliverables by the developer to hit. And the performance bond is a concept that was introduced that would help bring somebody from the outside to underwrite the project. And again, if it didn't succeed, then the citizens would have some protection of having to deal with either a project that didn't start or a project that wasn't completed. Will it be a perfect process? That remains to be seen. Will it require transparency, collaboration? Absolutely. But we think we've got kind of the fodder to make something happen. And if the council would entertain this option that Anthony had with a little bit more detail, that would be our recommendation at this point in time. And of course, it would be up to Ray to say whether or not that process and some of those conditions would be acceptable to take the next step, to get you, again, in a position of being able to have something there to make an informed decision.
Counsel, your reaction?
I'd like to hear from Ray, see what he says.
Ray?
Well, looking from the bottom up, in terms of the last item Kent mentioned about collaboration and working between now and the end of the year, to get more information, I would not have a problem with that. I will say that the information we provided was what we typically do and have done a number of times, several dozen times, in communities around the country, and never been asked for more than that amount. So it's kind of what we typically do. I'm not against giving more information, but I just wanted to go on record to say this is the norm for communities around the country that we've dealt with, what I have supplied. Again, not against giving more, but that's what typically we do. Bumping up to number seven, looking to a mutual agreement of a date to accommodate, et cetera, no problem with that. Number six, a small group to engage in negotiations and hash out the bill, no problem with that. Number five, city engineer, no problem with that. Number four, in terms of performance bond, and they sometimes are called performance bonds, guarantee bonds, or a surety bond, I don't have a problem if the city wants to get a bond on their own, pay for it on their own, and not engage me in the process. That's typically like a Lloyds of London insurance policy or something. But I would not be getting a bond or participating in a bond, a typical performance bond where I'm guaranteeing the performance. This is part of the risk that I'm taking, and this is part of the risk I ask the city to step up and take. But I have no problem if they want to get, you know, a Lloyds of London or some sort of insurance policy, separate and apart from me, my group, myself, supplying information or whatever, just to ensure the project, like almost like my insurance. I have no problem there, but not one that we would be involved in. It would have to be on the city doing that, separate and apart from us. Item number three, looking to the, by the way, they're very, very hard to get, extremely hard to get. Most companies in the country would not even be able to get a $1 million performance bond, most contractors, very hard. Item number three, looking to the friends of the Kirkbright to assist, are you saying to assist in fundraising to offset some of the $700,000 of my request from the city or beyond that?
That would be correct. Obviously, the city would look to, you know, particularly, you know, obviously pay for any performance bond, but there are obviously some commitments to that $700,000. And obviously, we wouldn't have $700,000 at the end, so we would look to the Kirkbright, friends of the Kirkbright, to help support that $700,000 cash portion. And obviously, you know, if it's more, then obviously, that would be to your benefit.
And then, I'm not sure, when you said in kind of goods and services, again, is that in addition to the $700,000?
That would be, you know, we would have to, obviously, we're not looking to negotiate this evening, and so, you know...
No, I'm just asking for the question so I can understand, to respond. I'm not sure what you meant by that, if you meant that the city, plus, or as part of that?
I would say, at this point in time, obviously, $700,000, and if it can be a plus, then that's so much the better for you. But minimalistically, we would be looking, minimally, we'd be looking at the $700,000.
So, so again, the $300,000 to $500,000 that the friends of the Kirkbright would try and raise, if I'm asking the question right, has nothing to do with the $700,000. Am I getting that right?
No, there will be a shortfall of $700,000. We have some expenditures out of that fund that, you know, are already committed to, so there will not be $700,000 left in that fund. And therefore, obviously, if we're to trade, as a community, if we're to come up with $700,000, then we would need some help in terms of, you know, making it up. Obviously, you know, we have to, you know, until we get into a discussion on specifics, it's hard to say. But at this point in time, I'm suggesting that ultimately, you have a $700,000 gap in your funding, and we have to come up with a way of helping you bridge that gap of $700,000. And that would be a combination of what funds are left over, and obviously, you know, what the friends could produce, and if we have to put in some goods and services, you know, that would obviously help offset the $700,000 or bridge that $700,000 gap, then that's what we would look to do. But obviously, you know, we can't, today, here now, sitting, I can't make you any promises about what we can or cannot do, because it's not obviously up to me singularly to do that.
Back to the performance bond, then who would you be bonding if it wasn't me?
Ray, we would be bonding you and bonding the project. The city would take care of the process to get the bond in place and pay the premium on it, much like a surety bond, where somebody comes up with a guaranteed maximum price on a construction project, where the owner seeks some assurance to make sure it comes in on time and within budget. So we're comfortable that we've got some resources to assist with underwriting yourself and your partners and the project, but the proposal would be that the city cover the premium on that and wouldn't look for you to insert that as a cost of your project.
Well, I just don't see how the city could get a performance bond like that without us stepping up as a player in there. And I'm not saying paying the premium, but again, maybe there's a way. I've never heard of it, but...
Ray, I think, just to clarify, what we'd ask your participation would be to share project information, to share project financials, those types of things that the project is underwritten. Again, not asking you to financially contribute to that, but you wouldn't be doing anything that you wouldn't otherwise be doing for banks and equity and those types of things. So again, the city would propose to bear the financial consequence of that, i.e. the premium, but you would participate in the process of sharing information regarding the project. Again, no different than you would otherwise for other third parties, or in fact, the city itself.
Along the lines of the performance bond, I could see our group sharing some limited information, but from having done performance bonds before, typically, they go way, way, way beyond on that type of information to be able to step up and guarantee it, involves then, you know, the contractor or the general contractor, the subcontractors, involves them all the way up and down the line. They all get, you know, funding and lien waivers and so forth. But maybe that could be worked out. I would say, skipping back up to the top of the list, back to the $700,000, this is what I originally requested, that the city, and it's all that I asked from the city except for other things we've talked about, like parking, accommodating parking and things, but this to us was a major fundamental part of it, and we're not comfortable taking that on the come or over time or in increments. This is what we needed to make the deal work, is that injection of $700,000 on the front end. So that's a deal breaker for us, and we'd have to stick with our original proposal. Again, I understand all of the concerns, I understand where you're coming from, and it certainly is a risk, but for us, you know, it seems like, in our minds, it's a shared risk, and, you know, this is something that we have to hold tight on. That part we can't negotiate. That's what I asked for, and if the city could do it, great, but if they can't, I understand.
Ray, I think, obviously, you know, it would be a pity to not go forward just because of $700,000 not being injected upfront. Obviously, all of your costs would not be incurred on day one. You know, your costs are going to be incurred over time, you know, from obviously the commencement to the finish of the project. And, you know, what we're suggesting is obviously, you know, a staged payment program, so you would have funding, you know, as you draw down on other funding too. Obviously, you know, there's, you know, there's a one and a half million dollar developer fee in the project. That developer fee would not be paid out on day one, that would be incurred over time. And so therefore, you know, I think the funding, I don't see and I don't think that we should close the door just because we're not able to provide $700,000 on day one.
Well, we're not looking to take that as a developer fee. We were planning to use that for all of the plans, blueprints, structure, all that stuff that had to happen in advance, and we have to move quickly on it. So we would be spending it quite quickly, and there might be some reimbursements about a pocket and stuff, but it wouldn't be anything to do with a developer fee. That, as I mentioned in my written material, actually ends up getting deferred till the end of the project normally, and it has to be pledged, almost in a contingency fund in the event that there's a shortfall. And so typically, we don't take that developer fee in draws. We don't even take it in terms of over time, we take it at the end if it's there, it's left. And if we've gone a little over budget, that's what gets taken first, our developer fee is off the table. So it's a pledged developer fee to these taxpayers. So we wouldn't be taking money out of the $700, but, you know, I've talked to our folks that are involved in Bill Brown and so forth, and it is a deal breaker for us, you know, this is what we've asked for for quite some time, and it is what we would want.
I mean, there are some consultancy fees in there as well. I think, I can go and get my book to look at it specifically, but I don't think it makes sense to throw the baby out with the bathwater over whether or not the $700,000 comes on day one. Ultimately, I think it's a negotiable thing that can be done, you know. So, I mean, but obviously, if you feel that strongly that you need $700,000 on day one, then, you know, unfortunately, the city is not in a position to do that.
Yeah, I understand. I understand, and I respect that.
And I shouldn't say that, not speaking on behalf of the city, but my recommendation is the city will not do that. But I think we can find a way to obviously share that $700,000 with you as time passes.
If you feel that is a possibility, then perhaps the solution is to fund it immediately, and then the city work to retrieve some of those funds, if they feel, the city feels pretty confident they could do that over time, to repay that maintenance fund. I wouldn't be opposed to that.
There isn't $700,000 in that fund. You know, there are portions of that $700,000 that are already pre-committed to varied other projects, you know, which are associated with, obviously, the Kirkbright and the Schlossman portion of what we're doing up there. and the Schlossman portion of, of what we're doing up there.
Well, yeah, and I, you know what, I, I shouldn't pinpoint it on the, on that fund. I, I saw that fund there, and it seemed like it made sense because it was a fund that I thought at the time was earmarked for maintenance, and didn't think it needed to be spent on making the building. I'm not asking for it to come from any particular fund. What I'm saying is, this is what we're asking for, seven hundred thousand from the city. I don't care what fund, it doesn't matter to us. That's the commitment level that, that we're asking for. That's what we've asked for, for quite some time now, since the other money was off the table. And that's what we're looking for.
I, I would say these are potentially negotiating points on the, on the contract. I mean, and, but if you, if this evening you, you, you want to make it that that is an absolute condition of going forward with a developer agreement, then, you know, then obviously, unfortunately, I don't think we can, you know, we can do any, anything about it. We can't, we can't, you know, the city has commitment, obviously, to other funds, and, you know, the RTC funds are sit in certain accounts, and, and we can't just transfer, obviously, monies from one account to the other without obviously a lot of discussion and recourse. So, I, I, I think, you know, we, we should try to work through a developer agreement, but, you know, that, that obviously would be, you know, obviously a major sticking point if you, if you want seven hundred thousand dollars upfront.
Yeah, I don't know. For us, it, it comes down to, you know, the value engineering of it. I, I know the city has participated with other projects over time in the community, and have injected funds over time. I have always felt that that amount of money, seven hundred thousand dollars, is, I think, less than three percent of the total project cost that we proposed, and I felt that that was a fair request. And I felt that that's a fair amount of money to do this thing and to save the building. And I hate to make it a sticking point, but it really is for us, and, you know, if it's, if it doesn't work, again, I, I understand.
Ray, again, I think what, what Anthony is saying is, is the, the community would commit towards coming up with a development agreement that would allow the seven hundred thousand dollars to be committed towards the project, but we, we need to have some milestones, some deliverables associated with that. The city has supported businesses through a business subsidy agreement over time, but those are conditions of getting some things done and making sure that you have, have a project. So, like any partner, you want to be at the table, talking about the things that need to happen to make the project go, to make sure that the seven hundred thousand or the percentage of the contribution towards the project is going to go to making the project happen, rather than handing over the, the money upfront. That, that's what we're trying to say, is we think we can come up with some strategies where you could utilize the funds to further your project, but again, handing it over upfront without defining those types of things which need to be accomplished to get the public and community support is, is real challenging at this time. And I think you said, like with any other project, there's this development fee out there, and, and it's, you know, in your, in your budget, it's about 1.5 million, and typically, I think you would upfront some of the costs until you can get to that point of the developer fee being reimbursed. So, in a project like this, I think it's commonplace to come up with some funds to get you through the closing and the sale of the tax credits and the like, and, and this process would be no different. But, but again, the, the city doesn't have kind of a direct mechanism like a developer fee like you would have to get reimbursed on this. So, we think that we could come up with a strategy to make sure that the seven hundred thousand dollars is spent per year project pro forma, but kind of the unconditional payment upfront, kind of on this record, is, is real challenging to recommend.
Well, I understand.
Ray, this is Hal. Am I to understand that you're not willing to even negotiate on that item in order to have the, the project go forward? And secondly, and I don't mean to ask this in any harmful way whatsoever, but this is not a strategy, I hope, for us to refuse to go forward negotiating over this one particular issue.
I'm not sure I understand that second part, Hal.
Let me just ask, is it a means for us to reject the project and give you an out?
Oh, no, no, that's not what I'm saying. Let me say this. First of all, we have spent over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of time and money ourselves that we'll never get if this project doesn't go through, it's gone money. So, we have spent a lot of time and a lot of money, a lot of man-hours on this, and that, that's all down the tube if we don't proceed, and, and that's the way it is, that's the life of the, of a developer. But in terms of going forward, I'm, I'm going and retracing back some history, and different amounts of money that was discussed over time, et cetera, et cetera, what we thought were some baseline commitments and so forth that didn't happen. We narrowed this thing down, and we pared it down from four million dollars and cut back on certain things that we were allocating funds to, to try and lower it down to a number we felt was a minimal number that could work. And we got it down to seven hundred thousand dollars, that's all the gap is. And it's important for our people in our group to see some good faith exercised, we're out a quarter of a million dollars off, already in cash and man-hours ourselves, to see in good faith the city step up and, and do this from this fund, or from whatever funds are available. And this is what I've asked for, and I've asked for that in that form and fashion for quite some time. This is what it would take to do the deal, to come back and then put a lot of conditions and milestones and deliverables and things on it, doesn't work for us. For example, in Newcastle, Indiana, it's been cited as an example, it's a similar community of size, similar, in, in almost square footage, it's almost as big as the one we're doing, that hope to do in Purgis Falls. They fronted eight hundred thousand dollars upfront before we ever took possession, before we ever did any work. In cash, on a seven million dollar project. City fronted that. They're spending another approximately two million or so, or two, two hundred thousand on the parking lot for us. They haven't spent that yet, but they fronted eight hundred thousand dollars upfront for our project, and then we proceeded and went from there. They, they, they fronted that money to get it to a point of where we needed it to be. We need the funds upfront for the reasons I suggested. That's my request, and that's, that's been a fundamental element of my request that hasn't changed. This is what I'm asking for. If, if the city doesn't feel they can do that, I understand, but it is a basic fundamental component to, to our project.
Ray, the, the Friends of the Kirkbride have just said that they, you know, asked when, when theoretically would, would potential closing be on this, and, and they said, obviously, you know, if we go ahead with discussion on a developer agreement, we would hope to conclude that by the 31st of December. And obviously, you know, the fund, the funding under your scenario would obviously be due at the time of closing, and, and they have pledged that they would find the seven hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, they would take on board raising seven hundred thousand dollars to fund your upfront request. And I should say, I mean, it is a community project, so, you know, obviously, you know, there's, there's a lot of people in the city that want to see that, that, you know, property be redeveloped, and so, you know, it, it, it would be, you know, a positive thing, you know, to do, and I think, you know, I, I believe they do, they, they have the ability to, to raise that fund. I mean, we had somebody ring up the other day, you know, willing to donate a hundred thousand to the cause. So, I, I, I think people have that, that sort of passion to make this happen. And, and I would say that still doesn't mean to say that if there's any funds left over from, from the seven hundred thousand dollar fund, that, you know, as we said earlier, you know, they, they, you know, potentially could be allocated to the nonprofit buildings that you propose at, at the Kirkbride. So, those funds get used on the project and enhance obviously the community. I kind of feel like we're trying to negotiate a contract here, and I, I think we're trying to do something a lot simpler than that.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up a bit. Could you repeat that, Anthony?
I, I said, I feel like we're trying to negotiate a contract here, and I, I think that it's a lot simpler decision that, you know, is in front of us today, and that decision is, you know, do we go forward to negotiate a developer agreement and purchase, and then sort obviously some of these things out? You know, obviously, the devil is always in the details, as you know, but, you know, a long-distance phone call to try and negotiate a deal of this sort is, is not easy. I have a question, Your Honor.
Ken?
Why can't we conditionally agree to go forward? The condition being that by the end of the year, we will have negotiated the various points that were in disagreement over the evening. I'm with Anthony, this is not the time and place for negotiating. We need to get people together in a room, lock them in a room if necessary, until we can meet this gap in a way that's mutually beneficial to both sides. Nobody wants this to be a deal breaker. I'm sure that you don't want to be out your money. Nobody in this town wants this to be a deal breaker. And so, I wonder if we can go forward with the idea that we can negotiate this gap whichever way the parties find agreeable.
Did you hear that, Ray?
I did, yes.
Thank you. I think Mr. ...
Kent?
I'll just say that, Mr. Willie, this is Jay Psychos. One, thanks for doing this work, because I think you guys and Anthony, I appreciate you going through all this stuff. You did a lot of work to get us some information. It sounds like what you proposed to me was a reasonable approach, that's a middle-of-the-ground approach that lets us try to find a solution by then. I don't have a problem conditionally proceeding, but I, but the idea is going to be that there have, very clearly, there needs to be seven hundred thousand dollars from somewhere, right? I mean, as long as we know that, if that's a condition of proceeding, I mean, I don't, and the city's saying we're not fronting it, as long as Mr. Willie's accepted, you know, is acceptable with that going forward, then what could it hurt to continue to negotiate if someone's pledging the funds? I mean, they're going to have to come up with funds, that's going to be the kicker, right?
At, at closing.
But I appreciate this, and I thought this was a well-thought-out way to look at, a way to mitigate risk. So, thank you, and I, I hope as well, Mr. Willie, I'd be glad to serve it and help be part of this group, I'd look forward to trying to fill that gap.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Who's asking?
Stan?
Yeah. Anthony, are you, are you speaking on behalf of the Friends of the Kirkbride now?
Yeah, that's a question.
I, I can't hear who's ever speaking, I'm sorry.
Well, my question was, is Anthony speaking on behalf of the Friends of the Kirkbride? And clarify that, if you would.
I, Laurie Mullin obviously came up and told me that, and I repeated it.
Yes. Hi, Ray.
Hi, Laurie.
Yeah, it's Laurie. Yeah, certainly, as a gesture of commitment from this community, we will do what we can to raise these funds by whatever this, this closing date is. So, Stan, yeah, you're right, we are stepping up and making that commitment.
Thank you.
Ben?
Yeah, I'd just say that, I'd kind of echo what Jay said in the fact that I appreciate Kent and Anthony's work on this. I think it would be a shame at this point, we've come so far to, to, you know, to, to end this tonight, there's obviously disagreement. The developer has said all along that he wants the seven hundred thousand upfront, cities came from zero, and it's obvious that we want to find a way to negotiate that and work that out. I appreciate the fact that Jay has offered to serve on a committee, that I, I, I think we have to go forward and try to work that out. Appreciate the Friends of the Kirkbride, as a community, come up with, I do personally have some reservations about the city coming up with seven hundred thousand dollars cash on day one, but the fact that we're avail, willing to talk about and make negotiations and make that seven hundred thousand dollars available, whether it's funding coming leftover from the state grant funds, or private fundraising, or a combination of the both, I really want to see the negotiations go forward, think it's imperative that we do that, and I would make a, I'd actually offer a, a resolution to that effect to go forward, just point Jay and Anthony to work with Mark and Kent to negotiate the, the details.
I will second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tim. Scott?
Ray, before we go on, are you okay with that, what we just talked about with the seven hundred thousand, where the funding with the Kirkbride is? I haven't heard an answer yet about that.
I'm not exactly sure I'm hearing everything correctly. You're asking, am I okay with what?
Are you okay with the Friends coming up with seven hundred thousand to get this fund balance equaled out? Is that okay with you?
Here's what I would say, I, I would want to consult with Bill Brown, my partner, and consult with the Friends to see the viability of doing that, and I suppose that if we, I'm not saying defer a decision, and I'm not saying punt the ball on fourth down, but if we were able to, I can talk to my partner, and if I could consult with the Friends and to see is there really a viable capital campaign that could, could do this in a timely manner, maybe what it could be is subject to raising the money, we could go forward, something like that might work.
I, I think we'd want to negotiate obviously the developer agreement in a concurrent timeline, you know. I, I mean, I, I understand obviously you want, you would like to talk to the Friends of the Kirkbride, obviously, I appreciate you need to speak to your partners about, but in reality, you know, your demand is for seven hundred thousand dollars of cash, and as long as we have seven hundred thousand dollars of cash, technically, obviously, you shouldn't be concerned about where it comes from, whether it comes from the city or the Friends of the Kirkbride, which is made up of residents of the city. So, I, I think, you know, they've made a pledge to come up with it, and I think that would be a good basis for us to go forward and negotiate a developer agreement.
I would say yes, so long as it was done in tandem, and before then we finally executed the development agreement, we knew where we stood on that money.
I, I think it would be, it'd have to be a condition of the ultimate developer agreement that that money is there, right? I mean, I think that's a clause that would be in there.
Okay. Yeah, then, then that's okay with me, I think.
We have a question on the floor. To proceed with negotiations for a developer's agreement, and I think we all have a fair understanding of where seven hundred thousand dollars will be made available within the developer's agreement, and we need to vote on that.
It was formed as a resolution, and I think the resolution, the proper way to It was formed as a resolution, and I think the resolution, the proper way to do it is you're appointing a committee to continue the negotiations, and, and so I believe that was the purpose of the motion, was to engage the, the committee and give the committee further instructions to continue the negotiation process.
Any question or concern about that? Then I'll call for the question. Roll call, please.
Sinslin.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Psychos.
Yes.
Brinkwurst.
Yes.
Sinslin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
The resolution is passed. Thank you, gentlemen. Well done. Ray, thank you for being with us and for agreeing to go forward. We look forward to a developers' agreement that will be mutually beneficial and launch our project.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Okay. If anyone, we'll take just a quick breather here, and if anybody would like to leave, you're welcome to do so. We do have a consent agenda. The following are non-controversial items intended to be approved with one motion without discussion. If a council member, staff, or member of the public would like to discuss an item, please ask that it be removed, and it will be placed elsewhere on the agenda. Item one, resolution to support of tax levy recommendation to restore funding requests levels back to the 2014 levels for Ottertail County Historical Society, a Center for the Arts, and West Central Initiative. A portion of these funding requests would be paid from the recommendation of not conducting a 2014 audit of the Pebble Lake golf courts. Item two, resolution authorizing the city's in-kind contribution of $5,000, leveraging $40,000 from Fund 264, approving the submission of the Small Cities Development Program preliminary proposal to deed, and authorizing the mayor to sign the preliminary proposal. Item three, resolution to approve amended data security policy for the city of Fergus Falls. Item four, resolution to accept $21,155.97 donation to the public library and to use the funds for the sole use of new construction, expansion, and/or renovation of the library building. Item five, motion to authorize the public library to submit expanded learning-through-l libraries grant to the Minnesota Department of Education. Item six, a resolution to declare Unit 2067, a 2013 Ford Interceptor police vehicle as surplus property to be sold or traded toward the purchase of a new vehicle. Item seven, a resolution to initiate Public Improvement 7190, the construction of a sanitary sewer main slash relocate sanitary sewer service at 127 Vasa Avenue West, and authorize obtaining quotes for this project. Item eight, a motion to approve minutes from the October 20, 2014 regular meeting and the October 27, 2014 special meeting. Item nine, a motion to approve licenses, and you have an amended list in your packet. I'll entertain a resolution to approve. Jim, thank you. Stand, second. Roll call, please.
Sinslin. Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Psychos.
Yes.
Brinkwurst.
Yes.
Sinslin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
The resolution is approved.
Item H, ordinances, resolutions, there are no first readings, no second readings this evening. Under resolutions, we do need a resolution to approve the 2015 labor contract with police patrol officers, and I'll call on Mike Hartwell.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, I bring before you a resolution for the patrolman's contract agreement, which pertains to the following items. Shift differential for patrolmen is signed to patrol shift only. This is a $20 per shift times 26 payroll event, which comes to a total of 520 annually. Number two, Article 11, which is sick leave language, which is in conjunction with Minnesota state statute changes for sick leave. Number three is the cost sharing proposed by the city for $526.50 for single coverage, $10.65 for family. Number four is a 2% wage increase, which was approved by the council on 10/6/2014. And last, number five, a $50 annual uniform allowance for members of the dive team only.
Any questions?
I would offer that resolution, Your Honor.
Thank you. Randy, second?
I'll second, Your Honor. I just had one question, too.
Ben? All right.
So are all the contracts across the board, all the sticking with the, the 2% and all the, the health insurance, and all those are the same across all the different unions and all the employees?
Yes. If your question is, has it been consistent with every group? Yes, except for one. Teamsters Yet is to be settled. We're still waiting.
And you're still working on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Sinslin.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Psychos.
Yes.
Brinkwurst.
Yes.
Sinslin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you. Item two, resolution to approve budget adjustments, and I'll call on Bill Sonbore.
Thank you, Your Honor. Within your packet, I think it came maybe an email later, there's a memo that goes through some budget adjustments. Most of these are for donations we've received, so, that and forfeiture dollars, so money coming in and then increasing the corresponding expenditures, so a zero impact on the bottom line of the budget. But the first one, increasing public library for $4,065 of donations, forfeiture's coming in, $7,585, and then reclassifying some of those forfeiture dollars over to transfers out of $8,865. That's where we talked about, we're replacing those police cars, doing that out of the equipment fund, but we're moving some of those funds from forfeitures over to pay for that. Park and Rec area received $15,650 of donations towards the Noise Park, so some generous donations there. Community development area received a $1,000 donation for those premiums, those art premiums, for the Art in the Roundabout, to get that project off and running. And then again, for the Parks area, VFW Post 612 gave $4,000 towards the fence replacement at DeLagoon. And then the senior center, $300 coming in from the senior program to go towards that fitness trainer program, so that's your list of budget adjustments.
Someone offer a resolution?
I'll offer that.
Jim, thank you. Stand, second. All right. Roll call, please.
Sinslin.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Psychos.
Yes.
Brinkwurst.
Yes.
Sinslin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you. Under J, Board Committee and Departmental Reports, one, a resolution to accept the DeLagoon Campground Master Plan and to authorize the Parks and Recreation Board to develop an implementation plan.
I'll offer, Your Honor.
Thank you. Second, Randy? Roll call, please.
Sinslin.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Psychos.
Yes.
Brinkwurst.
Yes.
Sinslin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you.
Can I ask one question on that?
Yes.
Steve still here?
Yes.
What, what do we need to do in terms of, do we need to authorize you or anything about looking at how you go about applying for the grant?
You just did what that approval of the master plan, that gives me the go-ahead to, to move forward in the spring of 2015.
Okay, I just want to make sure you got it.
And I can update through the Parks and Rec Board and let you know how that's going.
Yeah, and they'll all come back, and you'll have to take official action, you know, for us to submit it.
All right. Yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
There are no reports from, oops, we need a, we need to vote. All right. No reports from staff or administrative officers under old business. We will have a council discussion on rental registration policy, and I'll call on Lynn Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor. The basic premise behind this discussion, we talked about it a little bit, we had put in the fee schedule to increase the rental registration fee considerably to fund an inspection program of all rental units. I have here, it's 17 pages of police, or fire calls to rental units in the last 10 years. I don't know if Kyle has any records that he could show how many police calls, but what the inspection program and our thought process would be, just to cover basic life safety issues in each rental unit, so smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, railings and the like, just basic life safety issues, again. We have many rental units in the city. We've got 2019 units. We have a little over 5,000 utility accounts in the city. That includes business accounts and industrial accounts, so with 2017 rental units out of 5,000 and some accounts, that's a, a large percentage of the dwelling units in this city being rental units. So if you looked at this spreadsheet that April put together of the surrounding cities, we have, in comparison to other cities in the area, no, no rental inspection program, but we have one of the largest numbers of rental units in the area. So to try and take care of some of the issues that precipitate these fire calls, this was our intent, to try and alleviate those calls and to make the rental units in this town safe and good places to live. Our fee schedule, it does increase each dwelling considerably, but it would be merely to fund an inspector going to each unit and doing an annual inspection.
Are these figures the proposed fee schedule, or is it the existing one?
What was proposed is, I can go through them, from one to nine units would go from $10 per year to $20, uh, to $20 per unit, per year. So that's a significant increase from one to nine units, $10 per year, and then from that to $20 for every unit in that same building. 10 or more units would go up to $15 per unit, per year, and then there's a late registration fee that we proposed, and then an allowance for properties that are under HUD or IRS 4D jurisdiction, and are, the landlords are receiving funds for those units. So, again, basically, just to fund time, either city time or contractor time, to go and check life safety issues.
Will it, in effect, do that?
It's shown that it does do that in the cities that are listed in the spreadsheet that April put together.
All right.
If I could start by, several meetings ago, you had passed or adopted the fee schedule for 2015, and that does not include these rates. You were, that was asked to have that, that taken off that, and that was just prior to sending out all the notices for, you know, all the different licenses and for the rental registration. So all those notices have gone out to the property owners, and they're starting to play the, pay those fees. So, you know, as we start to have this discussion now, please take into consideration that this would not be effective for, for 2015. And I think also one of the things that had been brought up before is that, you know, when we initially adopted the rental registration program, we did provide, we sent a notice and provided an opportunity for the rental property owners, you know, to come to a special meeting and to voice, you know, their concerns or ask questions or those types of things. So I think it would really be prudent that at, that at some point that we should do that. And then one other thing that if I could maybe have, have Rolf address, is I think there's a big difference between what, what Guy is talking about on, you know, doing these basic life safety inspections versus a recourse that a renter has if, you know, they have a broken window or something, for example, and they don't feel that, that their, their landlord is addressing that issue. I don't think that's, that's what we're, that's not what we're trying to get at here. There's a different recourse that renters have.
Yeah, there's a civil remedy available to tenants out there, that if they feel that their condition of their property is, is not acceptable, and that the recourse, I mean, they, they have the ability to contact the city in its capacity as the building inspector, they have the capacity to let the building inspector into the property for purposes of conducting an evaluation of, of the complained condition, but the recourse, that's something completely different than what, what Lynn's proposing, but under that scenario with the, with the tenant that has a problem, they can go ahead and pay for the service of having the building inspector come in and inspect the premises, and then if they feel that they're, you know, that, that there's a problem with their, their recourse is to go to the court, and the court system has a system available where they can start depositing their monthly rent with the court, and the court holds it, and they can have a hearing, and a judge can make some decisions on whether the landlord should be able to get the money that's being held by the court, or whether the landlord should make, make repairs and the like. So I mean, that's generally the, the recourse that may be available, or the civil side that's available to tenants on, on these types of matters.
Yeah, and just to clarify a difference there, the, the more advanced remedy that Rolf is talking about will be on the tenant's nickel, correct? Essentially, for them to pursue that remedy, whereas the basic inspection that Guy is talking about would be, the cost would be borne by the landlord? Is that correct?
Essentially, through the registration.
Okay.
And, and again, you know, I mean, if the tenant had the building inspector come in on their dime, and if they felt that it was something that should be reimbursed by the landlord, that's a, that's a decision for the judge. I mean, so, you know, those are two separate issues that present themselves.
Ben?
Question different, switching topics real quick from, back to the fees schedule. Have you calculated your, the proposed fees that you put forward, how much revenue that would generate annually?
I think it was about $58,000, was it?
Yeah. I'm trying to think, if we collect around $10,000 now, and if it was going to go to 40, or?
Maybe it was 38.
It was 38.
Yeah, not 50.
I came in after the, when it got brought up the last time, and asked Bill, what do we collect now, and it's like $7,500 we collect now, and with this proposed, the proposed fee schedule, it would go to 38,000.
Yeah.
And so I, I think, you know, my question would be, who's, who's funding those calls now that the fire department's making?
Well, if it's a chargeable fire, which most in city limits are not, that's just taken out of the fire department budget.
Right.
For inspection fees or time that April or I spend in a rental unit, that's just borne by the building department budget right now.
And then I had another question, so obviously, we were talking about, you know, inviting, you know, landlords, did we, did we invite people when we put all the other fees up? I mean, what's the diff, why, why should we invite one group and, and not another group when we're discussing increase in fee rates?
Well, when, I, I guess, I wasn't looking at it so much from the standpoint of just that we're increasing the fees, because when we initiated that program, it was a whole new program, we, we hadn't done rental registrations before, and so there was the program, which, you know, involved the registration, but it was also a fee. And so we had some informational meetings that we sent out invitations to. The reason I was suggesting that here is that we're really expanding the program beyond just simply registering to now mandating inspections, and obviously, there's an increase in fee in that as well, so we're really going- really suggest that we, you know, request input from the property owners.
But I think if we're going to, I mean, if we ask them and they say, no, they don't want it, then what are we going to do?
They didn't want the registration either.
Yeah.
But they came to the table.
But I mean, if they sit there and say, no, we don't want it, then...
Jay?
It's based on the sheer number of people we're talking about affecting, and based on the fact that it's not going to take effect next year. I don't know why we wouldn't do that, and I kind of thought the council as a group purposely punted on this issue or took this off for further deliberation, so I'm kind of surprised to see it on the agenda tonight. I don't know why it's on the agenda, and I don't set the agenda, but I think we should do what you're saying, based on the number of people that we're affecting. And based on the fact that it's not going to matter for this next year. It's going to matter for the year after.
Well, just one thing, I got, I had a couple owners talk to me, and of course, we're going from $10 per building, and if you have nine units, it's going to go to $180 per building. So, I mean, it's a considerable deal. Plus, we're going to start putting more inspections on them, which they're not having now. I think we need an input from them to understand their side also, not that, and I think it should be done after the first of the year. I don't think we should try to get it between now and the end of the year with all the stuff going on. But it's something we should look at. I'm not saying I'm in favor or not in favor, but just I think we need to look at it, look at it as a whole, because it is a big increase, it's something we're getting ourselves involved in, and I know exactly where Guy's coming from. I mean, it's, is it a safety issue? But 80 or 90% of our buildings are safe. I mean, we're talking a very small group of complaint, or where we go to. Is that not true? I mean, is...
Yeah. I don't know percentage-wise, but I still think, though, if we did do an inspection, it maybe would, we might be alerted to something that could prevent an issue.
And I just think it's something we should communicate, and it would be good to communicate with the landlords. I mean, it's, they're a big part of our city.
I think then I would also say then, you can't spring rate increases on us on a day and then mail notices out the next day, because if you want that time to negotiate with, you know, the interested parties, then, you know, we too are an interested party, and it got presented on a day, and we had to make a decision on it to vote yea or nay, and then the notices got mailed out the next day. So, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. You know, we, you can't have it both ways. If they want notice to discuss the issue, then we should have had notice to discuss the issue. And so I'm not, I mean, I'm with everybody else, it's not going to take effect until 2013, so time is not, quote, of an essence. But I think the next time we're going to have rate increases on fees, if we're going to adopt a policy of gaining public input, then that public input has to be fair on both sides, not ram down our throats where we have to make a decision.
And we did bring that, of course, too quickly. Had that not been a topic, I mean, most of the, typically, there's non-issues in there, but this was a structural change, and it was our error. We brought it too quickly to you, and, you know, like I say, hindsight education. Unfortunately, it's clear, but sometimes we learn that way.
If I could suggest what we could do is, you know, we'll put together a draft of what that program would look like, and also do, go back and re-estimate or take a second look at the type of fees that it would generate, and then also Lynn could talk about how would we, how we would have those inspections done, because basically, we'd look at contracting those out. And I think it would be important to bring back that package so that you can ask a lot of questions, ask to have any changes, and then once it would be in a format that you think is workable, then we'll go ahead and we'll send out an invitation with, you know, as much information as we could to the property owners and then have something.
And I think included in that, we need to know, you know, how many calls there really are, and, you know, what the incidence is. I mean, because obviously, if it's only 1%, it's not a big deal. If it's, you know, 20%, it's a bigger deal.
Yeah, that's why I just got the fire call information. The police calls, I know, would be in the tens of thousands, but our ordinance does talk about the police, number of police calls to a rental unit. So this inspection program wouldn't address that. We wouldn't be, I don't know, we wouldn't be looking for stuff a policeman going into a building with a search warrant would be looking for.
I don't think a rental inspection's going to change the calls.
No.
One other question, Mayor.
Dan?
If, of course, if these inspections are basically the same as the HRA inspections, which you're kind of indicating.
Right.
Would that be a duplicate process then, for those that are under HRA?
Yeah, we'd have to get a list from them to see which ones they are covering, but yeah, I don't think we would need to duplicate what they're doing. But our schedule was going to give a break to that.
Yeah, and I think, like I was, what we understand is that we wouldn't be inspecting anything that's inspected by the state. You know, so you have group homes and things like that, that we don't, they're regulated in another way when you don't have. You know, so that's wouldn't be under this particular program.
So what do we have go forward with further work and...
If that's a consensus, it's okay, we'll...
I think Mark's suggestion is fine.
We have about 10 months, basically. We don't have to mail out new registration notices till October.
I would say that we don't have that much, we need to get something.
Good winter project.
A good winter project.
Any other discussion? Thank you. There's no new... Oh, there is new business. Dan always has some.
Way to go, Dan.
Okay, the memo was handed out just prior to the meeting. It's in reference to Public Improvement 7190, which is the sanitary sewer extension and service relocation. We sent out seven requests for quotes. We sent them out immediately because of the time of year. We did only receive one response. We opened these quotes at noon today. You can see the summary, and it explained that the base bid was essentially set up for work and completed in November of 2014, with a temporary street patch, permanent patch to come in next summer. Alternate A was for the whole project to have a completion date of June of 2015, and alternate B is simply a method of abandoning a manhole in place. We pull off the top cone section and then fill the barrel sections with sand. This is on a deep manhole that would no longer be in use with this change. You can see there's a significant difference, $13,500 or so difference between the completion this fall, as you can imagine, and the completion next spring. So we talked with some of the public works folks, looked at what our rental unit costs are, and determined that even using the temporary method of wastewater disposal, we still come out well ahead of the game cost-wise if we go with the alternate A, which is a completion date of June of 2015, rather than trying to do the work this late in the year. The recommendation is to accept the quote from Delsor Construction and award a contract to them for this work with the June completion date, which is alternate A, plus alternate B, which is abandoning the excess manhole, for a total of $25,411. This is a project that's related to the clinic project, so we will be sitting down and discussing with Lake Region Healthcare what costs are directly associated with their project and what costs might be borne by the city. In the interim, it would be funded through our 403 fund as our PIR, or as our PR projects are.
Any questions?
I would offer that resolution, Your Honor.
Thank you, Randy. Second? Jim? Roll call, please.
Sinsson.
Shire.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Phish.
Yes.
Psychos.
Yes.
Frank Ques.
Sinsson.
Hicks.
The resolution is approved.
Thank you, Dan. Under miscellaneous announcements, Lynn has been exceptionally busy with the election. You want to give us an announcement of how and where?
Well, the polls will be open in less than 12 hours, so it's a turnaround today, but just everyone in the city, that there's the four voting places that are open tomorrow, and just really want to thank all the election judges that have stepped forward. These people are amazing, and we pay them peanuts for the amount of work they do for our community, so want to thank them. And then also, just an announcement that next week, because of the Veterans Day holiday, anyone that has refuse or recycling normally picked up on Tuesday, that goes to Wednesday. So we'll get our announcements out, but start thinking ahead for that.
Thank you. Any other business? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. I think we're right on it. We're close as much as we can.